I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Village Board of Trustees Thursday, October 16th, 2025. First order of business, Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clark Johnson, please do the roll.
President Lynn.
Here.
Trustee Eifert.
Yeah.
Trustee Frank.
Here.
Trustee Abedlin.
Here.
Trustee Doorward.
Here.
Trustee Serin.
Here.
Trustee Andrew.
Here.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, public comment. Please note the public comments are limited to five minutes per person. All right, public comment. The next item on the agenda, consent agenda, approving the minutes of the September 18th, 2025 Village Board of Trustees meeting and approving the general fund, water and sewer invoices. Do I have a motion?
Approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, aye? All those opposed, aye? Abstaining? No. All right, they pass. Presentations, the next item on the agenda, 2026 Draft Annual Operating Budget. Administrator Jenkins, please.
Everybody said approve. Did you say? Well, while we're getting that together, this is our annual time where we get to start talking about the budget as a full board. As you all know, the capital improvement projects were recommended by the Finance Committee and been approved by you all a couple of months ago now. The Finance Committee is the same with our operating budget. They reviewed and recommended approval. What we'll go through tonight is the same kind of presentation I do each year, but for us, for you newbies, just a very high level presentation of our incomes and expenses that we're expecting in 2026. The big caveat here is that we're still waiting on our final assessed values. They were supposed to have come out by now. They did for some communities, but not ours. So until that happens, I can't say anything with definite answers. I can't tell you what these assessed value is. I can't tell you what the mill rate is going to be. I can't print off the budget book until we get that final number. So my plan is after tonight is that as soon as we do get that number, I'll update the budget book and then I'll probably hand deliver copies to each of you because I want to make sure you have enough time between now and our next meeting to review the document to be prepared to ask any questions that you might have. So we're going to start this off by looking at, I thought I had this all queued up.
Point to the computer.
We're going to start off by looking at this current year, so 2025 general fund revenues. We're projecting to receive 100% of our taxes. We actually already have our intergovernmental revenues. We should receive all of them. We're slightly low on our projected licenses and permits, so by the end of the year, we're predicting to have 90% of those, about 80% of our public charges, fines and forfeitures, and a little 3% more in our kind of other revenues miscellaneous category. When you look at our expenses, we could see 100% across the board. We'll use all of our general government revenue, our public safety revenue, public works. Parks will see a slight increase. Our conservation and development category will see a decrease, and then all our fund transfers will be completed by the end of the year as well. When you look at the schedule for 2026, it follows the similar timeline as it does each year's. First, we have final values that are determined with our assessor. Then you guys approve the CIP. We do handle line item requests by each department head. We complete the levy limit worksheet, and then we present a draft budget around now. And then the final step for all of this is a public hearing that'll happen in November before you guys adopt the levy and the budget itself. So our budget strategy remains the same each year, focusing on these three categories. We are fiscally sound, which means that we continuously review the services and products and programs that we have to make sure that they align with truly being the most fiscally prudent stewards of the tax dollars that we can. We're community focused. We want to make sure that the service levels that we provide remain the same as much as they can. And we're employee focused. We know that we need to maintain wage increases, flexible work-life balance, and a benefit package to ensure that we have, that we can both recruit and retain employees moving forward. But each year has its challenges. We have inflationary pressures, just like every other organization. We have equipment costs, lead time that continue to be a huge challenge. Our technology costs and reliance on those programs. Our insurance costs continue to go up. We have aging facilities and equipment. And then finally, our capital improvement plan, there's always more asks than we have money for, and that will never change. So going into 2026, we are looking at three major categories. Our public works equipment will be investing $406,000 into public works. Our street projects, we have $282,000 segregated towards streets. And then finally, utility projects, we have $460,000 dedicated to that. We'll talk about it later in the agenda, but Washington reconstruction is a big piece of these plans here. And then this is just a simple look snapshot in our general fund. So the total general fund change from 2025 to 2026 is $19,000 negative. It goes down, actually. Our tax levy, you could see, and I teased this earlier, you're allowed to increase your tax levy based off a net new construction. So we get to increase to whopping $1,864, which we're all really thrilled about. And then our other revenues go down by 3%. So really, in total, the amount of dollars that we have to play with from 2025 to 2026 went down in our general fund. When you look at those revenues in 2026, you could see that 66% of our revenues come from our general levy of taxes. After that, it's our intergovernmental revenues that we get from the state. And then we have various miscellaneous categories for forfeitures, licenses and permits. On the revenue side, this is very high level, but we can see that our levy limits could virtually stay the same. We'll see an increase in intergovernmental revenues, that state shared revenue and our local transportation aid that we saw increases in, but we're planning on a decrease in our permit revenues just to correct it to actuals. So then when we look at the expense side, our biggest expense, as it typically is each year, is public works. You're welcome, Eric. After that, it's our general government operations, our public safety, and then the transfers that we do to our other funds. So just to highlight those expenses, we're planning on a 5% increase in our general government expenses. This covers legal fees. We'll have a four-year election year next year, salary adjustments. There's virtually no change in our public safety costs. There's a 7% planned increase to public works, which continues our investment in equipment maintenance, streets, sidewalks. We see a 6% decrease in parks while still investing in our maintenance and staff time. We're transferring $157,000 to the fire fund. Again, each year, we transfer dollars from the general fund to the fire fund just to make that department whole. We have an additional $61,000 to get transferred for future fire equipment purchases. We've talked about this a lot, finance. So think of like the fire ambulance that's coming up, the fire engine. We're going to keep squirreling away money as much as we can. $101,000 will be transferred to the CIP for cash on hand purchases. And then $100,000 is what we call our contingency. That's our ready day fund that we save for. And if you guys remember back to the auto report where we got that, they had asked us to keep in mind to increase our fund balance. Well, this helps us do that. The more that we do that each year and actually practice what we preach, then the more that we can grow that fund balance. And that's it. Look at that, six minutes. But when, like I said, you don't need to grill me or ask any questions quite yet. Whenever I have the budget book complete with those final numbers, I'll get that to you all. And then we plan on discussing again the first meeting in November, and then we'll have a public hearing and final approval at the second meeting in November. So we should have plenty of time unless the state changes the timeline on us. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have one question.
Yep.
Do any of our funds, even state funds, get transferred in, distributed by a state or directly to us or through grants?
Not, not the annual revenue. Those are all projects through the state budget that we pass. So like the Act 12, all of that, that's everything. So if you're asking if any of the federal dollars are at risk, right, they shouldn't be. They're just tied to the state's state budget.
Talking about government shut down.
Yeah, not that I'm aware. It shouldn't be impacted. There's those larger programs like, well, you guys know I'm applying to the STP funding, right? So a lot of those larger grants can be impacted by, by the federal dollars not to improve because of a fund of those programs. But as far as the intergovernmental revenue, that's just state.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda, report on village committees, the joint review board.
All right. Yeah, so we had our annual gatherings. Not a whole lot. We discussed, really, we just kind of went over the financials, had the presentation, and board on the PE 300 report to present the fourth.
Well, I didn't think we'd get impacted. But I can next time.
If anybody wants to see.
All right.
It was included in the JRV packet that went to the entire board.
There we go. Because it was actually a motion to approve the filing of the annual report, so not necessarily for to.
All right, and I believe trustee Abedlin, the finance committee is also yours.
Yeah, we had all kinds of fun that night. Joined the new board, finance committee. Well, Chris kind of stole the thunder. Basically, that was the outcome of that committee, the draft budget. So and and then we also discussed the fire protection contract and Wabaka. The big thing was the annual increase. They historically included, well, in this one, they put a one and a half percent annual increase. And with inflation average around three, one and a half just didn't seem right until we discussed maybe going back to the negotiation table and trying to get a better contract on it. So I don't know if you have anything to add, Brian, or not, but.
Yeah, in reviewing, I did reason to achieve and his board of directors to discuss the request that we look at a 4% increase. It was noted that the contract has a timeframe line where we had to notify them. We had notified them before August 1st of 2025 for that to happen. So otherwise, we're at for the next three years. So the email I received tonight said, if you want to open this up, you can take this as notification for the 2029 contract too. So what that in there and say this is an official notification.
I would increase that 4%, 6%.
Yeah.
Hey, hell.
We can give you notice, we have just got, just got to go out there, says our official notification to negotiate something. And we can talk about it at that time, at that time, you know, so.
All right.
All right, the next item is the planning commission. I can give a brief summary of that. We discussed the proposed ordinance 2025, 202504, amending the village zoning code relating to home occupations. It was recommended to be considered by the full board, but with an amendment to permit home occupation to be allowed in permanent accessory structures as well as the main structure of the property. We also discussed the ongoing situation involving a commercial property that is currently in use as a residence. The commission recommended that an attorney draft a letter with a clear set of actions, timeline and deadline for resolving the situation. And that's pretty much all we covered in the planning commission. Questions? All right, on to the next item on the agenda, report on operations of the village by the village president. Hey, that's me again. First, I'd like to congratulate Chief Wyker as first responder of the year. Congratulations, sir. I'm sorry I wasn't able to be at the, at Madison for your ceremony, but congratulations. Other items, we had 10 of our neighbors show up to coffee with the village in September. We chatted about a lot of things that were going on with the village, fielding questions about work going on, and the splash pad. Speaking of which, while the splash pad has been delayed far longer than we would have liked, we will be having a grand opening to the splash pad on November 1st. We might want to wear long johns instead of swimsuits, but we will have the splash pad up and running at that time. I would also like to say that our business of the month for September was Sukkot, Fredonia car wash. We had an interesting conversation with the owner, who is a longtime resident of the village, Matt Bialzik. And we talked about the village. We talked about his history, his experiences here and so forth. It was a very interesting conversation. Finally, and on a more serious note, trustees have received an employee evaluation form and documentation detailing Administrator Jenkins' goals and achievements during the past year. These should be reviewed and evaluation form completed and delivered to me either via email or whatever. By October 31st, I'll consolidate the evaluations and we'll discuss them during the closed session at the regularly scheduled visual village board meeting on November 6th. And that concludes my report to the village. So on to the village administrator, Administrator Jenkins.
Of course. Thank you, sir. First off, I think we found a new residential building inspector. Woo-hoo, we lucked out. And the name should sound very familiar, Jeremy Pfeifer, who you just asked to be appointed as our commercial inspector, is willing to take on residential as well, which we appreciate. So he'll be coming forward with recommendations, most likely updates to the fee schedule. And then he actually works under a contract, so he'll have a contract that we'll bring before you as well. But I'll tell you, it's really hard to find inspectors right now. There are a lot of communities that are losing good folks like John Durler that are retiring, and they're knocking down people's doors like Jeremy's to find somebody. So we're very fortunate that we nabbed Jeremy when we did. Clerk Johnson can tell you, we have a great relationship with Jeremy so far. He's been doing a great job, and so we look forward to him expanding his role with us as well. I wanted to update you guys on Fox Glen. We're now 30 days out since we sent out our official notification of a public nuisance to the property. Now that we're past that date, yes, there has been some progress with the groundskeeping business that the mortgage company got hired to help kind of start that cleanup process. But obviously, the building hasn't been remediated in full. So we have, I shouldn't say we, our building inspector initiated like the legal process to start that within the court system. So that way they know, one, we're serious, and two, it sets clear deadlines with them that, you know, action needs to happen onto the property. So we appreciate everyone's cooperation with that. I talked plenty about the budget, but Treasurer Upson and I did attend the county treasurer's office and sheriff's department. They had a joint training on de-escalation tactics, which was great. And then they updated us on the process for tax collection, which is always, of course, thrilling. As I alluded to earlier, we completed the application for the STP local grant for Martin Drive. This is an 80/20 grant that covers engineering and asphalt. Luckily, we can extend, if we're awarded, we could extend that out to about five or six years. So keep in mind that if we're granted it, we still have to pay for the utility costs, which is a big chunk of money. But obviously, we're not going to look a gift horse in the mouth if we get awarded a grant to cover at least some of those costs. So I'll keep you guys updated with that. We also met with Stan Tech. They are actually working with the school district on some grants. And so since they were in town, we chatted with them as well on what they could possibly do with us. They specialize in more like the other recreational side. And so we had initial conversations with them, and then we have a follow-up meeting with them where they're going to come out and tour the parks with us. And they might notice things that we don't notice. That might be good opportunities to apply for where there's dollars out there. So we appreciate that help. Pain and Dolan, as you, I'm sure you all know, the Millie Work in Wisconsin Ave was completed, and we paved the base layer on Wenzel. As soon as the splash pad gets finished up this next week here, then Pain and Dolan plans on coming back to do that top layer. So all the way from Fredonia down Wenzel and the parking lot will be paved, and that'll look really, really nice. So we're excited for all of that. Our fall newsletter went out in our utility bills. You see a copy of that in front of all of you as well. I think each time we try to make this, make this document one more user-friendly and be more reflective of all the things that we're doing in the village. So I do want to give a big shout out to Clerk Johnson. I think she tries harder and harder each time to make sure that that newsletter reads that way. And I feel like we, you know, truly accomplished that this time around. We continue to do various other open communications with the Coffee with the Village, the monthly update series that President Lenz and I do, all good stuff to get that valuable feedback. And then, just because I can't say it enough, I want to give another huge thank you to Andrew J. Construction for the splash pad. I like, truly, I want you guys to understand that this splash pad would not be happening if not for Andrew J. Construction stepping up and donating his time, labor and expertise. So we'll make sure on November 1st, when we get to cut the ribbon, that he's a big part of that. Because we, our community should be very thankful to have somebody like that and really willing to step up. So that's great news, and we'll keep celebrating here throughout the year end. Thank you.
Thank you, Administrator Jenkins.
Question.
Yes.
What's, probably, uh, what, flash flood?
Yep, that's where the tactical situation happened.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
He stopped there, obviously.
Correct. Yeah. You got it.
Yep, all right. The next report would be from the village marshal, but he is unfortunately unable to be with us. His report is in front of you if you have an interest in seeing it. We move on then to the fire chief, Chief Wyker.
Do you have my report on front of you? We had a little uptick in ambulance incidents. However, less than we had last year at this time. We are still down by 41 ambulance calls compared to last year, which is a bit, but that doesn't help for a new piece of it. Paramedic intercepts, we've done 15 year today. That would be a paramedic intercept, our paramedic helping out with the ambulance for random bike animals. And then there still is a significant uptick this year being, rather than car accidents. We're up by 15 this year. So that's just the numbers in general. And then just wanted to thank everybody here for your support that I have gotten over the last three years. There's no way I would have been able to receive this award without your support and the passport of support on doing everything. And we've done this whole paramedic. So thank you all very, very much. It was an awesome experience down there on Tuesday. But Chris would join me and be there for that. So huge, it was possible. So thank you all.
Thank you. Next item, public works director, Paulus.
You have my report. The other thing I wanted to add was with the bulk waste being held at Wasteland Plant, I thought was a more controlled event. I thought it went well. If we approve it again to be held at the plant, the only thing I think we should expand is the Saturday hours, maybe till two or four. But it was nice. They were spaced out. We didn't have people jammed up. And we only had two incidents where they dumped outside the gate, so.
Were we able to?
Uh, no, I didn't have nothing overflow after hours and.
Were we able to identify?
I know who it is.
A little return to sender or?
No. That was all right. We have room in it, so we just picked up through it.
All right, thank you.
I didn't say nothing, and I figured it, let it go. He's local, so he's still with the village resident.
All right. The next report is from the village clerk, Clerk Johnson.
The website migration is moving along. So I'm pretty excited about it. It's going to be in early November, and I'm hoping that residents will have a much better experience using our website. So just to tell you guys, I'm having some issues with my distribution lists and outlook. So if you receive multiple meeting invitations from me, it is not because I'm clicking send several times. It is because we are having technical difficulties that Digicorp hasn't been able to solve in a timely way. So we're working on that. And HydroCorp, we're working in partnership to help them meet the terms of their contract before draws to a close at the end of the year. They have 76 scheduled inspections toward the end of October. So I think we're in really good shape. I went to the web convention. It was a great opportunity to network with clerks, to meet our top election officials. I think there's room for improvements, but it was a great first start. And the commercial E. Poebel Working Group started today. John Durler and I sat down to take a deep dive into his building permits so we can get everything closed out before Jeremy takes over in January. And that was super productive. We closed out everything from '23 and '24. And we are still working on '25, but we're making great progress. The newsletter went out, and then all the other daily operations.
All right. Thank you. Treasurer Upson.
I got to attend the workforce convention up in myself. I was very appreciative to go up there. I learned a number of new things. They had a new module that I would like to have us purchase. I've talked with Minister Jenkins about that, as well as Michelle, too. It'll just be very beneficial to use it. So unfortunately, that's just dollars to spend. But I think it'll be worthwhile. Aside from that, you know, a lot of regular things throughout the month. It was the utility billing, getting newsletters and them stuff, which was fun. We got to use the new postage meter extensively for the first time. So that was a great time saver. Then we have open enrollment for the insurances. So I attended, you know, a few meetings with that, still getting everybody going, and their choices are going to be, except that one's like, yeah, with the month. So busy with lots of those kind of things. And obviously, the taxes will start up very soon and they can learn with that.
All right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Ozaki County District Two Supervisor. Out here, Mid Moraine Municipal Association Designated Representative, trustee Doorward.
Referring, wants to start again and tell the assembly session, Senator session. So I believe that's going to be next month.
November, all right. All right, thank you. Next item on items for action and or discussion. First item here, discussion and possible action on the 2026 draft annual operating budget. So do we have questions of discussion for Administrator Jenkins regarding the budget?
And there's no action at this time because I have nothing to give you.
Well, we're going to set a public hearing next.
Well, yeah, that part.
All right. So we'll move on to the next item, motion to set a public hearing on the 2026 draft operating budget for November 20th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Any discussion on this?
So due to posting deadlines, that's why it's before you today. Normally, we would wait until the next meeting, but that window of time is just too small. So you need to set the public hearing now so we have enough time to post it.
Understand.
Yeah.
Will we have the numbers for it?
I sure hope so.
So October's weird, this because we have a two-week break. And hopefully, the numbers will come out in between this meeting and the posting deadline.
They were supposed, I'm sorry, they were supposed to have the numbers out last week, so.
And they were released for most of the county at six o'clock tonight. Um, but the village isn't complete, as well as a bunch of other municipalities in Ozaki County for some reason. Um, so we're taking things a little bit out of order. Um, the notice isn't complete, and it won't be complete until we have those numbers, but we're hoping for them at any moment. And we won't meet again in between when those numbers will come out and when we need to set the public hearing.
Who just had to go back here? January and twenty six.
Alright, we have a motion in a second. We have any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. All those abstaining? Aye, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda, motion to approve Strand Task Order twenty twenty five oh two, Washington Avenue Reconstruction Design and Bidding Related Services Not to Receive Forty Five Thousand Dollars. Administrator Jenkins, please fill us in.
Sure, unless you guys change your mind, Washington Ave is planned to get reconstructed next year. In order to start that process, though, we do need engineering plans drawn up. And so this is tasking Strand to do just that, so they will um get the site work done, do get the engineering, aid us in the bid process, and they'll plan on bidding out probably January, February time of next year.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions, discussion? Pretty quiet here. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to approve Strand Task Order twenty five, twenty twenty five dash two, Washington Ave. Buying and bidding related services not to exceed or quite possible.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. All those sustaining. The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda, correspondence. Uh, Clerk Johnson.
ATC sent you guys another um project update on the power line project. So that's in front of you.
Alright.
If what I've seen on this, either million bucks or mostly a little bit, right?
The contingent path passes through a small portion of the village at the southern end by the tid.
Yeah, that's the only part affected if they choose that route.
Any other discussion, comments? Alright, we'll move on. Items for future consideration.
I have an item. First of all, I'd like to introduce to all of you, my, my daughter and son, Jennifer and my student. They came to uh witness this suspicion occasion, and I'm about to lay on here. Um, I've decided to uh call it quits. Um, with half of the year gone. I would like uh I did that because um we can get an election for that seat I elected for in April. And without any extra elections or paperwork or, or whatever, um, I do recommend, and I always have that um, the seats up here be filled with the election rather than appointees. So I, if, if you agree with me, because I arranged my retirement to fit right in that group. And uh um, I had a wonderful time working, working with your people like uh when I first got the first bunch after pretty much everybody retired. And that was uh uh Rick and Josh and Bill and, and that whole crew. Um, I mentioned at a meeting that we had, a dinner meeting where we hosted that I was really happy, and that I thought the group that I was working with was the best group I ever worked with. And I still believe that. And uh, so uh, you guys go out with a congratulations and thank you for all this you've done and, and worked to help along again. Little side note, get the aircraft and thing in. So, but uh I will be uh leaving the mid moraine um also, so we're going to need someone to cover that. Um, hopefully we will stay in the group, and somebody will take that, take that on. Um so that's uh that's about all I have to say. I have uh I have a laptop that we were changing over, and I had to use paper today because I have this at home, and uh, the new laptop is at in the office, so we'll finish that change order. Um and I thank uh everyone, especially uh Michelle. Because she's uh, she's been a, a wonderful clerk. I've, I've uh worked under three clerks, uh Joanne and uh and uh
Sandy. No?
Oh, it's true.
Melissa.
Sandy.
Andy and Melissa.
Sandy, Sandy Trito.
Boy, that okay. It's for Joanne, I heard, who was uh the brother of uh our department director at the time. And Sandy Trito, who worked for the village for quite a while, became uh a uh an assistant um treasurer and assistant uh clerk before um she was before Joanne left. So she came and she was well trained, and she worked for us for about twelve, about ten years, and you've been with us now for about five, six.
Only three done. Time flies.
Oh, as well as you've got, it seems like was, so um, thank you once again for uh, for uh making me look good once again. It's all of us did make the other look good, so I've been that way, so. Um, and thanks to our treasurer, and big thanks to her, you're really doing a good job there. So that's about all I have to pile on her. Um, so then my last day will be tonight after the meeting. And uh I have uh a lot left to do. I have a lot of recouping to do from the cancer, and hopefully it keeps recouping, but you never know. Um, so I've, I've put in that all on uh whatever happens next, and working on it, so. Um so that's about it. So I have to say, thanks uh for our police chief, for our fire chief. Who I uh talked to uh getting, taking a job and uh, quite even years ago. And our president's decided to uh step down. Um, I thought I was going to have to talk to their leadership, but it seemed to be pretty easy to get you, to take the job. I was surprised by it, but it was, so, and you've done a damn good job, and I'm, I'm happy that that you were able to take that part and make that department. Um a real department and do something with it, and all the uh all the improvements you put in, uh, the engagement of renting uh and to buy it. Um the uh way we got together and sat down and worked out a scheme where we could all work together and create EMS system that we have today. Uh, a lot of that was your, was your work. And then, yeah, and on top of uh working in touch with everything else, so you've been busy. And I thank you for it. So, alright, I'm done. Alright.
Well, thank you.
Well, thank Chris.
Thanks, Dan.
Absolutely. Don, it's uh been an honor, pleasure. Thanks for your fellow here with you, Chris.
Well, thank you, Don, for your many, many, many years of service to the village and to the board. And uh, we are going to miss your wisdom and your advice as we move forward.
Well, I'm missing it too. I'm getting, as you can um tell, I'm getting a little puffler on the edges once in a while, and a little uh um hard to remember things or whatever, and it goes along with the cable and, and all the other stuff. So, rather than damage where I decided, well, I'm going to pull the plug. And uh, I don't have to worry about having uh the board being good hands because I know they're.
Thank you, and, and.
Yeah, you really, you really brought a lot to the table, and uh.
We'll really be missed. But that doesn't mean you can't be a stranger when I visit us. You know what we mean.
We're not done yet, right? We're going to have you back and, and honor you the way that you deserve for the time that you have spent serving this community over the last three decades. And for tonight, we have some treats after the meeting, so we want to celebrate you.
About twenty years on the on the uh county board, and thirty or thirty one years on another board, so. I've been very sick. But thank you very much.
And the other? Nope. Alright, do we have a motion to adjourn? Don?
Adjourn.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Rick?
Alright.
Alright, all in favor? Aye.
Now here I thought my last working was going to be spent. My first one is just to skip three hundred thousand dollars, buying a um that was uh, it's crazy, but that was three hundred dollars. That was my first. I hope we're always going to hear.
You didn't want to stick around to spend one, don't you?